Good morning, good afternoon. Welcome. This is John Hochheimer, President of the National Association of Rocketry. And I want to welcome everybody to our annual State of the NAR report. Let me start off with just a couple of thank yous. I definitely want to thank Todd and Ed. They've done an awesome job. Hopefully you're recognizing that, you know, we're just getting better and better at doing these virtual narcons. And I think everything's been going really smoothly and we're really putting out some good and interesting content for people. Secondly, I'd like to thank our presenters. I know people have spent a lot of time getting presentations ready. You know, thank you. And, you know, if you can volunteer next year, we'd love to have some additional people step up and volunteer for us. The keynote presenters and speakers were just awesome. I love both of them. And the manufacturers forum as always was was great. A lot of new stuff coming out there. So hopefully people are excited. Big shout out to Bob Sanford for organizing the the manufacturers forum. And Bob, you do an awesome job every year and thanks so much. And lastly, I just want to thank everybody who's participating. You know, you are spending a weekend with us. And hopefully we're giving you some good content and just thank you for the feedback and being a part of this. There we go. All right. As always, I want to start with a safety minute. So yeah, let's talk about safety. First and foremost, safety in our hobby is everybody's responsibility. And and we hope that everybody takes safety seriously and and everybody's an active participant in being safe and helping to keep our hobby safe. What are some of the kind of things that keep me up at night? Fire safety, for one thing. As I've moved to the great state of Colorado, wildfires are much more important to me now than they were living on the East Coast. And certainly, a rocket coming down in a bad spot and something bad happening can create a fire. So let's not start fires. You know, that's something that's going to really put us out of business. Let's keep our rockets on our launch sites and that's everybody's responsibility as well. You know, certainly, we're not planning on having rockets go off site. But, you know, do some analysis and really think about how you're going to keep that rocket safely and land safely on the launch site itself. That's what we're trying to do here. And aside benefit from that, not only is it going to be safe, but it's going to keep your neighbors happy as well. We lose a lot of launch sites just because the neighbors get mad from us stomping all over or their perception of we're trespassing and ruining their property. And some people just don't want others on their property. So keeping it on the launch site is going to keep the neighbors happy, which keeps the site owner happy. Let's park and keep spectators safe and respect the launch angles. You know, so if the wind is in this direction, these red dots are where the predominantly or predominantly where the rockets are going to fall. And so if we put people and vehicles to the side of it, the chance of errant rockets falling on people or vehicles is going to be significantly less. Also, I know there's some sites that you can't or you have a limited ability to move where you put people and vehicles. There's one simple thing you can do, just adjust your launch angle and do it diagonally away from people. And that'll give you an increased margin of safety. And by doing that, we're going to prevent what's happening in the third picture, you know, rockets coming down with recovery system failures and landing in bad spots. Couple other things. One of the the presentations I saw yesterday by Curtis Heisey on clustering. Great job talking about clustering, but there's an added benefit to to what Curtis presented in that he presented a great process on organizing a way and a system to evaluate risk on something like clustering of rockets. So, you know, by all means, take a look at that presentation. I think you'll get some good information. And Curtis, big shout out. And then lastly, something I hear every once in a while is that people are under the impression, well, we have insurance there. Therefore, I can do things a little bit more risky. No, no. Just because we have insurance doesn't mean we can do risky things. Our insurance is helping us for hopefully things that never happen. And if something bad happens, it's because we've taken as much of the risk out of the equation as possible. And, you know, just something unfortunate happened and something unpredictable. And that's why we have insurance. Our insurance is pretty expensive now. It's approaching $100,000 a year. It's largely driven by our number of members, but it's also equally is driven and downward in the pricing by the fact that we're not having a lot of claims to the insurance company. All right. So who's your officers and trustees? So myself, President Steve Crystal is our Vice President. You can read Mark Kevin. Marcus Secretary Kevin has been our treasurer. And then the other members, Don Carson, Becky Green, Steve Lubliner, Lynn Thomas and Jim Morrison. A great group to work with. I often joke with them that when we have board calls now that it used to be I could predict what was going to be controversial by thinking the least controversial thing that I brought up would be the most controversial thing amongst the board. But it just seems now that, I don't know, I've become a mind reader and they've become mind readers. But, you know, there's not a lot of controversial things that we discuss. We come to, we have lots of really healthy discussions, but then we just come to some really good, strong agreement on how to move things forward. Okay, we have bi-monthly Zoom calls, which are open to the members of the organization. And the schedule for this is posted on our website. So, and, you know, we love to have people participate and listen in on our bi-monthly calls. Big shout out to our NAR headquarters and staff. We have two permanent employees, Marie, who's been with us since long before I was a part of the organization. Marie continues to be awesome and doing a great job. I just can't say enough about, you know, Marie and the job she does, helping to service the membership and being the face of the NAR. And, you know, you all know Todd now. You probably know him before, but Todd does an awesome job as our Director of Communications and Publishing. Todd and I talk periodically. He's coming up with some great ideas to improve services and improve things for our membership. And then he goes off and implements things and things just turn out great. You know, he's done some really interesting things. We have a digital member guidebook now. Our website is is getting just a tremendous amount of activity. We're pushing hard to increase our social media presence and the Members Forum is something that we brought up. Excuse me, that we started this year. And it's starting and there's a lot of really cool and interesting conversations that are going on in the forum now. And thanks to Todd. And we have several contractors that work for us as well. Anne Heacock is our accountant and Anne is doing an awesome job. And I'll talk a little bit about some of the accounting stuff that we're planning for this upcoming year. John Bolden's been our webmaster and keeps things running. And he's done such a good job that he very rarely has to do much for us anymore. Monica Rooker is our newest contract employee and she handles our social media. And then Myra Marquez, we hired last year and she's in charge of supporting our high-power certification activities. And sorry, what started out as a part-time job is now a full-time job. We have so many certifications going on throughout the year now that it keeps Myra busy, just keeping up with things, getting pins out, getting the information to get cards printed. And this whole team is just doing an awesome job and just shout out and thanks to our staff. All right, let's look about, look at our membership. And I love to to sort of brag about the statistics. And I just feel great that our association has just continued to grow almost steadily over the past 10 to 15 years. When I made this slide, we had 9,028 members. And this is an increase of a little bit over, if I can do the mental math, about 500 more than we did last year. Actually, this morning I looked it up and we were at 9,064 members. And a couple of other fun facts, we exceeded 9,000 in November and actually November was our highest record ever of 9,068. We'll probably exceed that over the next couple of days. Couple other things to mention. We've grown year over year from 2021 to 2022, 757 members. From 2022 to 2023, we grew an additional 523 members, phenomenal growth, 1,200 plus members over two years. Most significant growth has been in this leader category. And I have another breakdown. I'll show you in a minute that further illustrates it. But we've had almost 31% growth year over year in the leader category. And that equates to about 300 plus new members. All these buttons. I talked about high-power certification. Right now, we have 4,440 high-power certified members. And the breakdown you can see in the chart. Roughly 53% of our eligible members are high-power certified. And I just did this roughly by trying to screen for members over the age of 18 years old and then figured out the percentage from there. Again, our High Power Coordinator Myra is working really hard to keep up with the demand. And there's weekends that she just gets slammed with, you know, multiple certifications from individual members who are doing certifications. And, you know, when we, when the launch season kicks off again, I thoroughly expect her to be very, very busy again. Couple notes associated with high-power certification. Please read all the directions and follow the requirements. Use the current tests that are available. If you're, if you aren't sure, reach out to Chuck Knaff and he'll put you on the straight and narrow. And if you have to submit materials, do it in a timely manner. And this helps us turn things around quickly on our end. And if for some reason you never got a pin for a certification level, it got lost, you know, reach out to us and let us know and Myra will send you another one. I understand there's some chatter on the, in the forum that a couple of people did get their different certification pins. Again, just let us know and we'll hook you up. Okay, break down a member age. I love this graph and it's been evolving throughout the life of my presidency. And something happened this last, over the past year that really I think is very interesting and really shows now the dynamic of how our organization is changing. All right. So every time I do this report, I pull the members, the data from the members as best I can decipher the ages and, you know, most of them are good. We've got a lot of people that are thousands of years old and some people that I don't know what their birthdays are. But anyways, we sorted out, get all the good data and I plot this up. You know, and usually I look at it and say, oh, the mean is 45, 46, you know, whatever it was. And it's steadily been decreasing. Our median age is somewhere around 50, 51. And that's been about the same or it's been steadily decreasing as well. But this cohort where I'm most excited right now. All right, this is the first time since I can remember that the 20 to 25-year-old cohort is the largest group of members within our organization. Six months ago, it was the 60 to 65 cohort. I was always in the largest group. Now, I don't know what I'm going to do because I'm no longer in the group of cool kids. But I think this is just phenomenal. A couple of other things. And I'm going to talk a little bit more about what we're going to do with respect to trying to engage this group a little bit more. But there's always this tale out here that intrigues me. And I pulled this data before I went back and did a couple of corrections because I knew I could. But Vern, if you're out there, this one right here isn't you. You're in this group. So if it's good, you're listed in the database as your birthday being in your, the year of your birth was 1934. And then, you know, I heard some conversations yesterday and oh, Vern's turned 93 this year. And I'm like, that doesn't add up, right? So I went back and looked and I went to Wikipedia and Vern, I made that correction for you. So in our system, you grew four years this morning. Sorry about that, but I can turn it back if you really want me to. But this other one, then I looked and I'm like, who is this person that is up in this upper age group? And we have a member Dorothy Hunt from Utah is in fact, and I did some sleuthing on the internet. And as best I can tell, Dorothy still is residing in Utah. And she, with the exception of Vern, was our oldest member and fills it in in our graph right here. So Dorothy, if you're listening, awesome. And someday I'd just love to meet you. All right, moving on, NAR sections, our sections are strong and have grown tremendously. And, you know, huge shout out to Chuck Knaff. Chuck continues to do just an awesome job for us. Section Activities Chair. His colleague and great friend of ours, Ed Chess, helps him. And for those of you that participate in the Section Grants Program, when the request comes in, once Chuck clears it, it's checked out the next day. And people are, we're turning money around to the sections in just unbelievable speed. Right now, we have 238 sections. This is up by, I forget where my notes are. But this is up over last year, I think it's roughly 10 sections greater than the year before. Roughly 45% of our members, around 4,000, are actively affiliating with a section in our database. I continue not to believe that. I think it's more, but the, you know, the data are the best that we have to go by. With our Section Grants Program, Chuck and Ed have done such a great job. We're almost the peak year of granting section grants. I think the peak was 70 a few years ago. We're at 69 this year or during 2022. And we allocated over $16,000 to sections in the form of section grants to help our sections grow and thrive. It's active again for 2023. And, you know, if you need it, you know, please apply for a section grant and we'll get you out, you know, some money to help you with some equipment purchases, some outreach activities. You know, something that is worthwhile will support up to $250. Okay, a couple of other things on sections. Section renewals are going to start in the next few months. Chuck will reach out to you. Again, Chuck does an awesome job. He'll communicate with you. And for those sections, and hopefully you know who you are. If you're using our federal ID number for your checking account, we're going to reach out to you this spring. We'll give you a form. We essentially need to report your activity on our Form 990, which we submit to the IRS as our annual tax return as a nonprofit every year. Okay, so it should not be painful at all. It's, we just need to know what your total income is, what your total expenses were. And I think that's mostly it. We incorporate that into our Form 990 and life is good for us and life will be good for you. So if you do get a request for that, if you could please turn that around as quickly as possible, help us out. All right. One of the things I like to do is, is remind people what our business model is. And, you know, this is not to say that it wasn't operated like this in the past, but certainly we're becoming a larger and larger small business or small-sized nonprofit. And we have to operate our organization as a business. And I hope that people are realizing that myself, the board, our employees are truly operating this as a business. And we think of this as, as a business. A couple of other things. When you purchase into our membership, this results in some services and benefits that we provide you. And I'll outline those in a second. Our primary source of income is member dues. So we're a member-based organization and your dues is what's driving this train. Roughly 63% right now of our revenue comes from dues. And lastly, we provide membership to members younger than the age of 25, below what our cost is. And we've thought for a long time that, you know, this is a group of individuals that we want to become members and thrive in membership as a younger. And so we think it's a benefit overall to the organization, short-term and long-term for this reduced rate. Again, we're a business and we got to operate a business. We're, I'll show you financials in a second, but we're approaching $800,000 a year business. So we've grown considerably and this is a lot of money. We're nonprofit. We have to file tax returns every year. That's our IRS Form 990. We do a great job. Our accountant helps us out and it's going very, very smoothly in our filings the last several years. And we have a very efficient mix of employees and contractors and purchase services that help us be efficient in how we spend the money and operate. And I'm proud to be able to say that right now, we're doing awesome in terms of our finances. We have over $260,000 in cash on hand right now. And our net worth is a little bit less than $340,000. So we're doing pretty awesome in terms of business. I remember, I think it was what, two, three years ago now, I think it was two years ago, I had to get up here and go, oh my God, I'm losing sleep. I went from being a dark-haired person to a gray-haired person. You know, I didn't know how we were going to pay our bills. Our membership, we did some things, tightened our belt in some areas. We increased our dues a little bit and our membership has exploded. And all this combined, we're doing very, very well financially. And, you know, I just want to keep growing like we've been growing. A couple of things, again, just so people understand. As an organization, when your membership and purchasing a membership provides you some benefits. These benefits include, here's a list, you know, insurance is probably the biggest thing. It's our biggest expense or one of the biggest expenses. Give me a magazine. We have a member guidebook that for new members, but it's got a whole lot of really great information for existing members. It's electronic now. Did I say that before? We have our Members Forum that we just started this year. And that's a members-only benefit. So and we're trying to get as much information on there as possible. If you haven't visited our Members Forum, please do. There's, there's some really cool stuff. Well, you know, Todd's got people now uploading past newsletters from different sections. And so if you want to see what Mars newsletter is like and some of the history in Mars or Narum or Narhams or I don't know, I think Novar, I saw those in there as well. There's newsletters in there from all over the country. And if your group's not in there, you know, please work with Todd and upload them. It's great stuff. We have our website with some additional member-only content. You get a membership card. We do high-power certifications. We support our sections and we do some other things that are direct tangible kind of services and benefits for you. We do some other things that I think benefits not just you as an individual, but the hobby overall. We do a lot of educational programs. We do grants and scholarships for students and teachers and outreach programs. But we support a lot of STEM-related activities. You know, very specifically, we support and we've been a partner with TARC for over 20 years now. We, the Student Launch Program and a contract with NASA for, I think, more than 10 years. I'm sure it's more than 10 years now. And Becky Green and the people on the West Coast with the RLS section have supported the RLS program for greater than 20 years as well. So we're doing a lot of really cool things STEM-related. We provide safety codes and motor testing for you. So we're providing a lot for the hobby. That's not just a direct benefit, but there's some tangible things for our members. Let me take a, I'll slow down. One of the things that we've done this year that I hope to be able to grow is we've taken an endowment and put it into an investment account that should enable us to provide the annual amount of the scholarship every year. And hopefully it's going to grow enough that we'll be able to actually increase that scholarship as that fund grows. So essentially, I think I've talked about this, but I'll reiterate it because Jay was just awesome in doing this. But Jay apt last year endowed some money to us for a scholarship fund. And it's posted on our website and it's got some really cool aspects of it. But he's basically endowed a scholarship to support somebody in science and technical areas, either in a college or in a technical school to learn technical skills. He did it as part of managing his portfolio. We were able to take that money and actually the whole of it, because we got some additional donations that allowed us to fund it over the next several years. We put that money in an investment account. And now that money's going to grow and it should be self-funded in perpetuity. And that's our hope. I want to do this with some other funds. All right. So we give roughly somewhere on the order of $20,000 to $25,000 a year in scholarships and grants to people. My goal is let's convert, let's get some donations, establish a fund for that, invest that money and do this in a similar fashion. And what this is going to allow us to do is we can let that money work and strengthen. And we'll take the proceeds of that, fund the educational scholarships and grants that we want to fund. And then we can take the, our general operating funds and use it to fund other kinds of activities that benefit the membership. So in essence, I'm very happy that Jay endowed this money for us and that we're able to actually make his money work towards a long self-funded kind of activity. And we'd like to see and create the ability to do this in other ways. So consider, if you have a retirement account and it's burdensome and there's some tax implications for you if you don't somehow spend the money, we'll help you by investing the money in our scholarship and grants fund. We can take stock. All right, we're, our investment manager is a full-service brokerage. So if you have stock and want to give us stock, we'll take stock. If you have planned giving, certainly let us know. And let us know that you want your planned giving to go to this kind of endowment fund. And lastly, if you have an estate and putting us in your estate, we would love to, you know, be able to remember you into the future. One thing on estates, giving us all your rocketry stuff doesn't really help the NAR. In fact, if you have a bunch of rockets and motors and that kind of stuff, give it to your local club. But, but if there's stuff that we can use to invest, it would be great for the organization. All right, let's talk about, this is, this is our actuals from, from last year. And this is the income side of our ledger. So our total income was a little bit north of $776,000. Biggest driver, like I said, was membership. That's about $500,000 or 63x percent. The next biggest chunk, so I can use this thing, the NASA and student launch or NASA student launch in TARC that equated to about $100,000 of income. I'll caveat that with, well, a lot of this is in and out. But this money actually comes into the account and goes right back out for expenses. So John Lingdahl, who runs the Student Launch Program, pays a lot of expenses. A chunk of it goes to our insurance premiums because of, you benefit because NASA needed a higher insurance level for us. But the bulk of this is But the, the bulk of this i- is, um, for funding the activities that are associated with these two programs. The rest of these roughly six percentage, somewhere on the order of forty-five to, um, to fifty K, um, is donation. It's just a, a number of donations in general. Other miscellaneous income, um, just little things, some, um, national events kind of thing, or not national events, but just, um, other than the, these categories, um, national events brings in roughly forty-five K and sport rocketry. Todd does an awesome. All the things Todd touches are just awesome. Um, we're getting about forty-four thousand dollars a year in revenue, ad revenue from, um, sport rocketry. So, awesome. Our expenses, I broke this into a little bit finer detail, but, um, biggest expense is our headquarters operation. Um, that headquarters operation, this is salary, predominantly salary benefits and taxes that we have to pay on our employees. So that's the bulk of this, one hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars. A member services is the next biggest category, insurance, um, our neon database, um, the, the forum, um, other software packages we buy to the enhanced member benefits. A lot of that's what makes up this, um, hundred and forty-five K for member services. I'm administering the things like all the, um, you know, we have to buy computers, we buy paper, we buy postage. We get stuff printed, we get member cards printed, um, just all that stuff adds up and that's the administrative costs associated with the association. Our publications run right now about a hundred thousand dollars a year. Um, so that's the, um, the mailing and the printing costs for sport rocketry. And, um, it is what it is. And, and I'm, I'm happy we're, I didn't mean that in a bad way. I'm, I'm, I'm very happy that we're, we're spending that and we're, we're giving our members a, a great benefit. Um, talking to student launch, I told you on the other side of it, um, our actual expenses associated with those two is around sixty-one thousand dollars. Grants and awards about fifty-six K, um, and then it goes down pretty quickly, but professional fees, that's, um, our accountant. Then just other miscellaneous expenses, um, our national events are roughly eighteen K and we spent about seven thousand dollars in marketing last year. Okay. Their total expenses were seven hundred and forty-four thousand dollars. And so if you can do the mental math in your head, we actually netted thirty-eight thousand dollars more in income than expenses last year. So we did a great job raising money in, um, mostly through membership increases. We did an awesome job at controlling our expenses, our expenses. And year over year, we, we actually gained a little bit in our, um, on our bottom line. All right. Next, um, the board did a, um, uh, we did several, we met Friday, um, a number of people attended and provided us with some awesome input. Um, we did a couple of things, um, that, um, actually the board approved through motions. Um, one of the things we did is, um, we, we are required to pass a budget every year. So we passed our twenty twenty-three budget. That's the, sorry, I'm looking over, but, um, that's the bottom part of this screen is our, um, our proposed budget. I've put the twenty twenty-two actuals, um, for those same categories in there, just so people would, would have a reference point. So we're kind of flat year over year. We have, we increased a, a couple of things, um, where, where we needed to bolster them up. Right now we're projecting roughly five thousand dollars, um, to the black on, on our bottom line as, um, we'll, we'll bring in money than we spend if we stick to our budget. So. Next. Um, okay. So another thing, we had a, um, a really good conversation about our finances and managing our finances. And the board did three things related to this, um, that I, I want to talk to you about. So, um, hopefully it's not a surprise. I think I've mentioned this a number of times, um, through the, about the past several years. But one of the goals that I've had as president is to get an audit of our NAR finances. And one could say, well, why didn't you just get it six years ago? Well, um, six years ago, and, and this is not being meant to be derogatory at all to anybody, but, um, we did a lot of things that weren't up to the most recent and up to date, um, industry standards for the financial industry in terms of how we manage some of our, our money. Okay. We, we did a lot of things, um, that were practical for our organization. Um, there's no, um, none, none at all. Any worries about somebody embezzling money or doing anything like that. Um, we did what we thought was best, but when we talked to an accountant who specializes in nonprofits, she was like, well, we could bolster some things that you are doing to really make things, um, stronger in terms of how you're managing your money. And then show donors and, and everybody from the outside looking in, how good of a job you're doing. So that's what the audit really is going to show us. Um, so over the past several years, we've been working hard to create different practices and, and different structures within our system to get to the point where now we are comfortable with, with going out and getting an audit of the NAR finances. And, um, I thoroughly expect that, um, there may be one or two things that come back that they say we need to do, but we already know what those are in, in terms of making any changes. So, um, we talked to the board and the board approved for us now to go out and have an audit of our NAR finances. And so over the next several months, I'll work with the accountant to identify a firm and, and we already have one in mind that, we think will do a, a, a great job for us. And, um, they actually give us, um, a little bit of a discount if, if we time it correctly so that we're not bumping up against their taxes. And, um, so we're going to go out and we're going to get an audit and then use that then as a barometer to move forward, make any additional changes, uh, as such for our financial system. But, I think we're in really, really strong shape. Now we want the, the paperwork and, and somebody to, from the outside looking in to, um, to validate that for us. So that's step one. Step two is we're a five oh one C three organization and there's lots of different five oh one C three kinds of organization. But when you look at the, the different types and the nuances within a five oh one C three organization, there's one kind of, um, nonprofit that's called group or subordinate affiliation. And effectively that's how we operate with our umbrella organization, the, the overall NAR. And we operate in sections. So sections are these groups or subordinates that are affiliated with, uh, the parent organization. There's some tax things, uh, we don't pay taxes, but there's things that we, we think we need to do to create, um, some differences within how we're structured as a five oh one C three. And gain this group subordinate affiliation status that will help us do our Form nine ninety and be even more compliant with, with, with the, the IRS code is currently, um, and it'll actually make things easier for sections. All right. So the best example I have for that is, and where this actually came to a head this year is there's a local section that somebody wanted to give them a donation to the section, not to the parent organization. And we really didn't have the ability to do that, um, within all the IRS rules, because the, the section wasn't its own five oh one C three. And even if it was, then they had to be affiliated with us. And there's the, it was just a lot of, um, back and forth on, you know, how can we do this legally? How can we be of service to the section so that they get their donation? And how can we be of service to the donor so that everything is squeaky clean from them to us and us to the section? So, all right. So we were able to handle it. So we, we just got the, that organization to give the NAR parent organization the money. And then we turned it around and gave it to the, the section. Um, but creating this group subordinate affiliation will make that a, a much cleaner process. All right. It'll probably take us a little while to, to roll into this. Um, I'm, I, I don't know that it's going to be totally painless for our sections and we'll do everything possible to make it painless. But there probably is some information that we're going to have to gather from the sections to, to pull all this together. But bottom line is we're going to look into this, pursue it, and we think it's going to make us a stronger organization within the tax structure and contribute better towards, um, enabling sections and the parent organization to receive donations from, from major donors. Right. So that was the second thing we did and, and we talked about that at the board meeting and we'll, we'll pursue it. We'll come back to, um, the board once we get a price and, and figure out how much work it really is to, to do this and, and then keep moving forward. Then the third thing we talked about as, as a board was we, we reviewed the due structure within the organization. And I think that's just a healthy thing we need to do periodically. Um, we didn't come up with any increased dues. So don't, you know, don't worry, don't, um, no, no widespread panic. You still have more money to spend on motors and dues. But we're going to do this as a, um, a systematic thing every year and, and then communicate to the organization, you know, sort of where we feel we are with, with respect to our due structure. So, stay tuned. Again, nothing, nothing new, nothing changes. We're not going to increase your dues. All right. Okay. The, probably the, the, I don't want to say most significant because we passed our budget. We talked about finances and stuff, but another very significant thing we did at the board this year, our, our board meeting is, um, we've over the past, I'd say, six months or so been looking at the bylaws. And, and as a board, we've been going back and forth and Don, Don Carson, and I'm trying to think who else, Mark, um, and Lynn and Becky all took a look at it. And, and we sort of workshopped it. They came back with some, some changes and then they gave it to me and then I blew everything up and said, oh, I want to make some more changes. So, um, so then I went through and, and suggested a whole bunch of changes. And, um, we discussed them at our meeting on Friday. And here's a highlight of what we discussed and, um, sort of where we ended up. And at the end of this, I'll tell you what the next steps are. So, we did a, a review and, and made a lot of suggestions for changes that some I think are just, um, if nothing else, like housekeeping kind of changes. You know, we're bringing up a set of bylaws that, um, as best I can tell, were last changed in, in twenty eleven and that wasn't a significant change, but, you know, it's, they're kind of dated. All right. So what do we do? We, um, one is we clean up gender, gender references. So the he, him are, are out and, um, we, we clean things up. And so now our, um, unless we miss something, our, our bylaws should be gender neutral. And, and that's just a good thing to do. All right. We clean up a lot of references. Then there, there's board, board of trustees, trustees. We, um, fixed all that. There's a lot of changes in there. Um, and now it's just bored. So, it's board of trustees the first time. And then every, every, every time else we refer to it, it's just bored. We changed model rocketry to sport rocketry. Um, we do a lot of high power stuff and some people, um, don't equate high power rockets to model rockets. But sport rocketry, we feel is, is more encompassing, really easy change up at the beginning. We added in where appropriate, that voting can be done by electronic means. If, if you look now or by law say, you know, everything should be mailed out and stuff. And we still, um, will be mailing out things and, and doing things, um, and allowing people to do paper, paper, um, voting and communications. But, um, as best we can and for, um, um, to be more economical, um, we can vote by electronic means. So we made that change in the bylaws. Um, we did a couple of just little simple clarifying things. The, the language around annual business meeting was in my mind, a little bit ambiguous. So we, we just clarified the wording about the annual business meeting of the NAR. Robert's Rules of Order revised, well, um, as best I could tell, Robert's Rules of Order revised is on its wealth revision now. So the revised version of Robert's Rules of Order was many, many years ago. So we just changed it to reflect. Um, and it just literally says in their most current version, right? Again, little things, but if we're in there, might as well tweak it and make it current. And then the, the last piece on this, this set of changes is, um, that participation on NAR communication platforms. It's a benefit, um, to our members. And unfortunately with, um, things like communication platforms, sometimes the people on there get too enthusiastic about something or, you know, whatever, but they don't follow the guidelines and rules that we set up for that communication platform. They make it uncomfortable for others. And, and so, um, we have to, um, send them into a timeout room for a little while or do whatever. So, again, with our, the way the, the bylaws were structured, Article three, section eleven says, if you're going to discipline a NAR member, there's a very set process that you need to go through that essentially sets a tribunal of three NAR members. Um, they review the case and, and then they make a recommendation back to the board. Well, if we're going to discipline people on these communicate, communication platforms and we have to do a tribunal every time we, we need to put somebody in a timeout. I don't have the time. Uh, we're going to have member fatigue from doing these tribunals. So we, we just clarified in there that this is a benefit and we'll set policy on how these things should run. And if the policy is, is, um, not adhered to by the member, it doesn't fall under Article three, section eleven. In terms of, um, what we have to do to, um, discipline you on the, the thing. All right. Um, moving on now, the most significant and what I think is actually the most exciting bylaw change. It starts out with, um, we want to change the leader members who are sixteen to twenty-one year old members. And senior members who are twenty-one to twenty-five year old members to young adult members. All right. And this is then sixteen to twenty-five year old. Right. One reason being is our due structure is such that sixteen to twenty-five year old members all have the same dues. Well, it's a little bit confusing. And we've had a number of phone calls related to that. So we're going to tweak this and by grouping this all together, it just makes it a cleaner process in, in the membership system that we have. But there's some additional things that we want to do with this, that this is going to help facilitate. All right. If you remember back, when I showed you the, the distribution of our members by age, that twenty to twenty-five year old, um, cohort is the most significant cohort now of our, our member group. And, you know, granted it's somewhat arbitrary by five year increments, but hey, you know, it's a good, a breakdown of, um, cohorts and, um, myself in the board field is very, very difficult if we try to gain young adult members as board member or trustees, um, board members in the usual process that we do. So what our proposal is that the nominating committee, the nominating committee will seek up to two young adult trustees. They'll make a recommendation to the board. The board will ratify it. Then we'll gain two trustees. Who are young adults, so slotted young adult positions and we want this representation on our board. These young adult trustees, it's not going to be just a, um, you know, here you go. You can sit in and watch us be a board. This is, we want people that are going to come in and they have the same privileges and responsibilities as our senior trustees. With the exception of being officers, right? Eligibility is eighteen to twenty-four years old at nomination time. Their term is one year, but it can be renewed for up to two additional years. The, the eighteen to twenty-four, the twenty-four is the cap on, on that because they'll, um, age out at the end of their, um, that year. Um, the eighteen year old, we need that for, um, for legal purposes. So eighteen to twenty-four young adult trustees. And, and this is the process that, that we've developed. The one year term, um, we'd love to have these, um, you serve three years. A lot of what goes on in, um, younger members' lives, um, we didn't want it to be structured such that we're all the time having to backfill a position because they have to, um, bow out as a young adult trustee. Because of other life things that are happening. So this gives us the structure to be able to keep somebody on for up to three year term. But it also gives us the flexibility to shorten that term, um, as, as needed. Uh, I think that's all for that one. And if you can't tell, I'm excited about this. I, I really think, you know, as an organization, we want to bring in younger members. We need to teach younger members. How to operate on the board and, and, um, get them up to speed so that then when they're ready, they be, can become full-time board members and, and take this over and keep the, the organization going. Okay, getting down there, not too many more slides left. The last couple of things, again, these are a little bit more housekeeping things. Put some clarifying language in there. One thing people need to understand, meetings of the trustees are not the same as business meetings of the organization. And so we clarified that, clarified, we do working sessions of the board every other month. So we have bimonthly board calls where we do official business. But on those off months, the board gets together and talks about things and we workshop some stuff and we just. Get some things, but we don't make any decisions that are binding. We wait until we have our, our full regular board meetings. And then lastly, we clarified, there's a lot of language in the. The current bylaw. Talk about the annual reporting of our finances. Our Form 990 from the IRS or whatever equivalent, if it ever changes. Essentially meets all the needs, actually exceeds the needs of this financial reporting. So we put language in to substitute the IRS Form 990 as meeting the requirements of our financial reporting system. And then lastly, we added. A section under the nominating committee that they'll solicit resumes for young adult trustees and then make that recommendation to the board. Okay, so that's, that's all the suggested changes. So as a result, we had, I think, a very, very fruitful discussion among the board members and several members who attended the meeting on Friday. So we got some additional input, we tweaked some language. The board voted to approve these bylaw changes, which is step one. And we, the vote was to approve them in totality. The membership will now be given the opportunity to approve as part of our annual trustee election. The vote that the board made on the bylaw changes, right? Two-thirds of those who vote, it, it will be passed if there are two-thirds of the votes. Approve the changes. And then lastly, we'll post up before we send out the, the election prep and the voting packets. We'll post up a marked up version of the. The changes as well as a clean version of the changes for, for people to review. We're not going to ask that, you know, we've vetted this, we feel sufficiently. And we're not looking for a line-by-line approval from the membership, it's, it's the entire package. Okay. One more hard thing and the rest of it's easy. Actually, this isn't too hard. Okay. Remote control rocket gliders, as for those of you that fly remote control rocket gliders, I'm sure you're very aware of this already. But this is to clarify some of the things that we're doing as, as well as provide some information for the rest of our membership. But the FAA has been working for a number of years now to regulate more unmanned. I'm drawing a blank, UAA's, whatever, drones, anything that's radio-controlled, that flies is. Regulated by the FAA. And when, when pushed, the FAA. Determined at that point in time, that when we asked certain people there. That rocket-controlled rocket gliders actually fall under this, the UAA regulations. As well as the rocketry regulations, and so they're not exempt from all of the. Additional things you have to do if you're going to fly radio-controlled things. Alright, so one of the things that we can do organizationally is pursue a community-based organization status with the FAA. We're working on that, that there's an application and you have to have. A lot of information that's available to the membership associated with, with that community-based organization to. Help make, make sure everybody understands what the rules are and how we intend to. To implement those rules specific to our activity. And then you can also pursue establishing fixed recreational flying sites with the FAA. That then. Could permit the use of radio-controlled rocket gliders in, at launch sites. And enable them to fly higher than 400 feet. Okay, so, and I really don't want to go line by line in the regulations. We can do it offline if somebody's really interested, but just there are rules pertaining to UAA's. And RCRG are considered right now by the FAA that fall into that category. Alright, now, people can fly recreationally lower than 400 feet and don't. And this doesn't require authorization from the FAA. So if you have a RCRG and can fly it lower than 400 feet, you don't have to go. We or you or whoever doesn't have to go through the authorization process to do that. Now I'm told and it kind of makes sense that they probably, most of our CRG stuff goes greater than 400 feet. So somehow, if we're going to tag this on to our normal rocketry events, we need to go through a process to enable us to do that. That's what this community-based organization, fixed recreational flying sites thing hopefully will do. In the meantime, if people come to your section launch sites and want to fly RCRG. If they have all of the requirements checked off, they can do it. They can go to AMA flying sites that have this fixed recreational flying site thing established and should be able to fly. Given that the flyer does all the other requirements. But for our membership, what my recommendation is right now is. That if people want to come to a rocket launch and do this, if they're in compliance with the. The FAA requirements to date and it's their responsibility to ascertain that. You know, knock your socks off and the sections and our launch organizations. My recommendation is you leave that compliance up to the individual. So if, if I show up at your launch site and say, I've met all the requirements from the FAA and I'm going to fly this. And you don't, there's nothing safety-wise that you see that they're violating. If, if you as a section or launch organization choose to allow that person to do that, then let them do it and. Fly the stuff. If, if you don't feel comfortable because things are a little bit ambiguous, that's your prerogative as a section and you can do that. I'm sure this is going to get me in the middle or somebody on the board in the middle of a couple. Disagreements and we'll just deal with it, but this is the best I can give you right now. And we're working towards, like I said, getting this community-based organization status and establishing these fixed recreational flying sites, which will give us a lot more flexibility. And I have not given up pushing FAA to say that all our activities are already codified under FAR 101. And we don't have to do this. I haven't won yet, but I'm not giving up yet either. The last thing I want to say about radio-controlled stuff is periodically I get questions about drones at NAR launch sites and our launches. And I go to some NAR launches and there's none and I go to others and there's drones flying all over the place. And for the most part, the flyers are very, very conscientious of the people on the ground below them and aren't overflying the crowds and stuff. The policy of the NAR is this is up to sections and launch organizations. If you want to allow drones to fly at your launch sites. You can set up your own local requirements and have at it. If you don't want to, that's, that's your prerogative as well. To the flyers, fly at your own risk, alright? The NAR's insurance does not cover UAA's. Right? And it doesn't say if you fly a UAA at a NAR launch site, you're violating our insurance policy. That's not what I'm saying. I'm saying if you're a flyer, you could be a NAR member and flying a UAA, you're doing that. Activity at your own risk and our insurance isn't going to cover any damage or problems that you create with your UAA. Right? So again, up to level sections and. For the most part, I've seen that it's been handled fairly well. Every once in a while, we have some, some issues with it and we tend to sort things out, but it is what it is right now. I think the rest of it's all cool stuff, good stuff. And not hard. Couple announcements. We continue to try to increase our, our member benefits. Sport Rocketry in digital form is, is released now in the Members Only Forum. Immediately when Todd sends it to the publisher. So when it's ready to be published, it's in a digestible form for our members as well. Todd's loading that up now into the Members Only Forum and so you can read. Sport Rocketry before it, it hits the street in paper form. But you have to be in the, in the forum to do it. Secondly, the, the registration site is now open for NSL 2023 in May. So May 27th to 29th in Alamosa is when NSL, the first NSL is going to be. We're still working on securing a site for late summer, fall, sometime in that timeframe. Ed's working hard and twisting arms and really trying to come up with a site on the East Coast. And as soon as we get something locked in, we'll let people know. A couple other things. With this, the Narcon and all the content that's been generated from Narcon, like we've done in the past. For the first 90 days after this, it's available to you on Excel Events and you can log in using your Excel Events login. And if your computer's like mine, it keeps the information fresh in the system. It recognizes me and boom, I'm in the system. So for the first 90 days, you can access that information because you paid for a. To be at Narcon as, as we generate it, for those 90 days, it's exclusive to you. The next 30 days after that, we'll put it in the Members Only Forum. And then after that 30 days, we'll, we'll port it out to YouTube so that it's, it's more generally available. Alright, shouldn't be a surprise to people, but in case you haven't heard, NAR is hosting the 2023 World Space Modeling Championships in Austin. This will run from July 1st through 8th. They're still looking for Range Crew and help. You can contact James Duffy or Trip Barber. There's also a link on the website associated with the, the World Space Modeling Championships. If you go to the NAR website on our homepage, there's some links there. There's a place for you to sign up and learn about Range Crew on the World Space Modeling Championship website. If you have the ability, they still could use lots of help, mostly in the form of timers. Oh, and while I'm at it, I really wanted to shout out Robin Houston. You're doing such an awesome job with our younger members in, in the junior team associated with the, the Space Modeling Championships. Robin has really engaged a group of, of young members. And taken a lot of them from not knowing much of anything about flying rockets in general or flying. At the, at the World Space Modeling under the FAA rules to a group that's very cohesive. They meet very regularly. They're learning a lot of stuff. They're not only learning about rockets and stuff, but they're also learning about careers and she's bringing in speakers and giving them. Exposing them to people who can help them both with their, their rocketry activities and be the best team we've ever had. As well as some life kind of skills. So Robin, you know, just, you're doing such an awesome job. Thank you so much. Alright, typical closing stuff. Again, some really cool news. Our current membership, actually it's 9,064 the last time I checked. And we have 228 sections. High power is just going like gangbusters and, and the magazine. Tom and Tom Bates, you continue just to do such a great job and Todd and publishing it. You know, it's, it's the, the best. Our priorities, these really haven't changed, you know, go out there and be safe. Support all kinds of rocketry. We, we do, we want you to support it. Every once in a while, something comes up, you know, there's NOR, there's Tripoli, blah, blah, blah. Tripoli and the Tripoli's management and their board and, and our board and specifically myself and Bob Brown. President of Tripoli, we talk on a regular basis. We get along great. We think both organizations have very much lanes in, in which we service our members as well as, as overlap. And we think both organizations are serving the rocketry community well. So there is no animosity amongst, at least at our level. But anyways, do, do commercial rocketry through the NAR. Whatever you can to help us increase our, the diversity and size of the organization, you know, let us know, we can help you help us. Do outreach and educational activities. Go back and look at the, the information that the, that the Nikoles from SCs presented yesterday about educational programs. There's a wealth of information out there that you can draw upon. You know, a lot of y'all can be our best ambassadors, both in outreach to the hobby as well as educational efforts and STEM-related kind of activities. We're going to continue to try to offer full transparency. I talked about the audit. That's the last big step that, that I think that we can. Show the world how transparent and great organization we are with our finances. And we're going to continue to provide national support to our sections. So what can you do? Be safe, recruit new members, you know, volunteer when we, we reach out and we need volunteers. And do community stuff, be safe, have fun and pay forward. Oops, and I'm stick a fork in me, I'm done, right? Questions, questions, questions. Todd told me how to do this. Alright, oldest. Okay, so let me start at the top. Ken Weaver, fantastic event and job. Thanks to all Sport Rocket G, digital availability. When? I think I answered that, Ken. It'll be roughly three weeks before it hits the, it goes to the publisher. So like many things, I should know that it's, it hasn't been fully ingrained in my brain yet. But roughly in the periodicity of every other month, when Sport Rocket G comes out, a couple of weeks before. Now that you expected it, it'll be available to you. Click here, yeah. Oh. Alright, next, Loveliner, please mention that NSL waiver is 52,000 feet. Yes, the waiver, their expectation is 52,000 feet. Yay. Alright, whatever. Sorry, there's things that are covering over on my screen. Will there be any opportunity to comment, critique, change these bylaws revisions before a vote or will it be just an up or down vote? Right now, it's just an up and down vote. So we provided opportunity at the, the board meeting. When is the last time the Annual Association meeting at the NARM has actually followed Robert's Rules of Order? It hasn't happened for several years. I will try to improve. I think I've tried. Bob, does the 501(c)(3) subordinate affiliation mean we don't need to pursue our section becoming 7501(c)(3)? I think that's the answer, Bob, but I'm not 100% sure. Stay tuned, I'm trying to figure out what like IRS and FAA and all these other government rules. That's why we're working with our accountant, but I think that's the case. We need this status to be able to have a real bank account except credit card payments. Yeah, it's either that or you use the NAR's number, which is kind of awkward. But we're working as quickly as possible to try to get that changed. Still cannot support newbies to NARM. I guess that means that we're not paying for travel for newbies to NARM. If, if members want to come up with a, a plan and a way to finance it. We can bring it to the board, but just coming to the board and say, we want money without a business plan is, is not how we're operating. And remind people that when you go to board's site to join a meeting, you can sign up months in advance and then you are registered to joining. Yeah, you have to register to join because we do it through Zoom. And all the dates are published on our, the website and it should be self-explanatory, but yeah, you can do that, so. I already answered that one. It won't let me get out of it. Okay. I am not following in the chat, so are there any other questions or concerns? And. Bob Kaplow, on your two questions, one, I'm not trying to be dismissive at all. I do recognize that I probably have not strictly followed Robert's Rules of Order and I'm working hard to do that. And second. And secondly, on the, the bylaw changes, I see no real easy way to implement it that doesn't turn into just a, a lot of back and forth. My thought is you got to trust your board and if you don't, you can vote no. And but I don't know of any other practical way of getting it done. So. I'm not hearing anything else. So I will stop sharing and let you go on. So thank you all very much. I appreciate it. Thanks to everybody. And again, shout out to Todd and Ed. Great job. Thanks to our presenters and the speakers and thank you to you all. And I will stop and stop.